But it is going.
It is going. Okay, well, it is six oh six in the secondary school media center. And we will call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call. Vincent.
Yeah, President.
Ulrich.
Here.
Sauer.
Yes.
Sandstedt.
Yes.
Porter.
Here.
And Gross.
Here.
Um, do we have any public comment tonight? No one back there wants to make any comment? All right. Uh, then we will look to our agenda. If you notice on the back, um, we have a couple of resignations that we've added and also removed the, um, the agreement for right now is not complete yet.
Nope, it'll be on the December.
It'll be on the next board meeting for that. So, um, are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? And we'll look for a motion to approve.
It's almost second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That'll bring us right into our committee reports. We'll start with the truth and taxation hearing.
Okay, good evening. Um, I will be going through a PowerPoint presentation for truth and taxation. And, um, Paul will chime in when he feels the need and he's gonna be running the slides for me. So, um, feel free to ask questions anytime during the, during the presentation. Um, I might not see you, so just, uh, let Paul know and, or we can take questions at the end too, so. So this is the twenty twenty-five payable twenty twenty-six, um, levy that we're looking at. These first few slides are just to read over, um, truth and taxation law. Um, requires that cities, counties, and school districts follow certain steps before they adopt a tax levy. And then there's a mail notice that comes from the county each year. I don't know if you, if you have received it yet, but it should be received very shortly, um, and it shows what the percentage increases are. Um, next slide, so we have this requirement, um, to have this meeting and allow public comment or questions. So that's why we're here tonight. So next, there's three requirements, um, to share the current budget. So the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, the proposed levy changes, any changes from the prior levy to this levy, and some explanations, and then allow for public comment. And that's according to statute two fifty-seven point zero six five. So, um, things to remember for our levy, um, all of our revenue or formulas that are set up by the state, they have a lot of complex, um, formulas in place. Um, the levy sheets are like thirty pages long each year, so it is pretty complicated. Um, local levy and state aid is included, so sometimes if levy is going up, that doesn't necessarily mean we're getting more revenue. It might be that state aid went down an equivalent amount. So that's called equalization. The state only has so much money to allocate in each of their, um, buckets of money, so that's why that changes every, every year. So an increase doesn't necessarily mean an increase in revenue. So then next, we will look at the school district budget. This is the budget that was originally adopted for twenty-five, twenty-six. And the district does have five different funds. Um, the general fund, of course, is the main one that accounts for most of the activity, which would be the student enrollment revenue, um, local referendum levy, all the expenditures for classroom instruction and supplies, equipment, special ed expenditures, extracurricular, transportation, and then all the buildings and grounds, facilities, capital, and health and safety. So that's the biggest fund. And then food service just accounts for the breakfast and lunch program. Community service is, uh, outside of the K- twelve arena, so it would be anything related to early childhood levy, um, enrichment programs, um, school readiness, which is like the preschool, and then adult basic education. Then we have debt service and that accounts for when we pay bonds off for principal and interest payments. The fifth, um, fund is not listed here is we do have a small trust fund that's for scholarships. So, um, the numbers for the revenue is in the next slide. Um, so it shows the twenty-four, twenty-five actual revenues and then the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and the change, and it's just listing the four main funds. Um, so the general fund had a, just a change of negative one point eight compared to the prior year. Food service, a change of three point four. Community service is a change of negative thirty-six point six, but that's because, um, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we approved a transfer of funds into community service of two hundred thousand dollars. So that's why that, there's a significant difference there. And then debt service is an increase of fifty percent, which is, it's based on the principal and interest payments that we have on our bonds. So, um, the next slide shows a graph of where the revenue comes from in the general fund. So seventy-four percent is state aid. So we're highly driven by the amount of students that we have in our district, so as that changes, um, that revenue amount changes. The next largest piece is property taxes. And then we have a little bit in federal and local. Then next for expenditures, we're listing the same funds, comparing the twenty-four, twenty-five actuals to the original budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. In the general fund, there's only a small change, a one point four. Food service, six point two. Community service is about eighteen percent, and, um, that we're gonna look into a little bit further. Um, I think it's a very conservative budget at this point, so, um, we could potentially reduce the expenditure budget we have in that, in community service. Then debt service, about a five percent change. Then, um, next to break out general fund expenditures by program. So the Minnesota Department of Education has a complicated coding structure, and there's many different programs that we have to categorize. So, um, the biggest area that we spend, which makes sense, is in regular instruction. That's forty-three point three percent. And then secondly would be special education. That's fifteen point two percent. And then there's all the other different areas as well. Okay, so next there we have another pie chart that just shows expenditures for the general fund by object. So, um, salaries and benefits, if we total the two large amounts, fifty-three point two percent in salaries and fifteen percent in benefits, that's about sixty-nine percent of our expenditures, which makes sense. I mean, we are, have a lot of people in different positions to be there for the students. And then next would be twenty-three percent in contracts, which a lot of that is special ed contracts that we have. And then five percent supplies. And the other areas are equipment and other. So now we'll shift to talking about the school district levy. It affects three different years. In twenty-twenty-five is when we certify the levy. We start the process in September and then do a final certification in December. Then, um, all the collections at the community level are done during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then we actually don't record the revenue on our books until fiscal year twenty-seven. So we have different authorities, um, for school levies. They're either set by formula. They're voter approved or board approved. And we do have two voter approved referendums, one for operating and one that capital projects levy. Then next, um, there's different impacts that change, that make the levies change, which is inflationary pressures, different abatements that might reduce certain properties. There's property improvements that haven't been previously taxed. Then there's changes in market values and then changes in property tax classifications. For West Central Area School, we have two funds that we levy for. So ninety-seven percent of it is all general fund and only three percent is community ed. The previous year, we had a portion that was debt service, but now that debt will be paid off. So I'll go through that in a minute. So the next slide shows, um, in green, you can see that's our proposed twenty-five pay twenty-six levy, a total of two million seven hundred eighty-three thousand seven forty-one and sixty-two cents. So, um, compares it to the previous year, which was two million seven fifty-three nine forty-four. So only a change of about thirty thousand total, which is an increase of one point oh eight percent. So not a big change. You can see the dollar differences in general fund, two hundred ninety-five thousand three oh five, and then the debt service fund, a minus two sixty-seven eight thirty-four. Um, and that has to do with the LTM was going into Fund Seven, which is debt service fund. And that was helping to pay off the, the debt payments that we had. But now will be the last year that we make that principal and interest payment, so that goes away. So the money goes back into the, the general fund. Then, um, specifically breaking out the general fund itself, that's an increase of twelve point two five percent. And one through twelve lists all the different levy areas. So, um, a lot of the first, I mean, one through six, they're all going down. And a lot of that is either equalization, that we talked about the tax, the aid and levy shift, or, um, a reduction in our number of students, which then reduces the revenue. And then the biggest item is number nine, long-term facility maintenance. Shows that increased to two of your seventy-six thousand one oh six because it moved back from debt service to the general fund. The only one other big one that changed is the capital projects referendum, number eleven. And, um, that was approved a few years ago. It started out at three hundred thousand. That was voter approved, and it will change every year depending on the net tax capacity of the district. So, um, as the net tax capacity increases, that will keep increasing. So it did increase forty-six thousand seven, seventy-three from the previous year. Okay, la, um, the community ed is the next levy comparison and very little changes. Um, increase of three point oh eight percent, just in early childhood, which is based on the zero-four census count. So just a small increase there. Then the last slide, I know you're not approving anything tonight, but this is typically what a resolution would look like for, um, approving the levy, which will be on the next board meeting. So it just lists out the total by dollar amount for the general fund and community service fund and has you, um, certify it to all the counties. Oh, do you have any questions?
Perfectly stated. No questions.
Well, that's great.
All right, there are no questions and we'll move to our next comprehensive achievement and civic readiness presentation, formerly known as?
World's Best Workforce. Should've left it a pop quiz. All right, so I get to present our comprehensive achievement and civic readiness report. And the first slide just has our mission statement on it, um, which we all.
Because it's a PDF, I have to, it'll be a little different than the presentation.
It should be okay.
So I'll just, I'll do my best.
Yep. Um, and then this slide that you see here just explains what the CACR report is. So it was in twenty thirteen statute, um, state statute went into place that we have a world's best workforce and it's really the goal is to enhance our student achievement through teaching and learning. And then in twenty twenty-four legislature renamed it to the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. And there are five goals. So it's, um, all public and charter schools in the state of Minnesota are required to develop a plan with these five goals, that children, all children are ready for school, that we work to close the racial and economic gaps, that we have students that are career and college ready, that all students graduate, and that we are preparing lifelong learners. And remember, the lifelong learners was just added last year. Prior, prior to that, it was the all students can read by third grade and that one is no longer on there. Here's our timeline for, um, our plan at WCA. So we worked on developing our report based on our goals from last year, um, starting the summer into just recently and then developed our new goals for this current school year. Tonight, I'm here presenting our summary and then I'll also present our goals that we have, um, drafted for the school year as well. And then you'll go through the approval and then we'll continue to work through and implement the goals that we have set. So the first goal is that all children are ready for school. And we had set the goal that eighty percent of students who are eligible for kindergarten will meet proficiency on a district-created readiness rubric. And that goal we did not meet. We had sixty-five percent of our students, um, as they enter kindergarten were using the rubric, were kindergarten ready. Um, we did look at just our WCA students and that was sixty-seven percent. So the sixty-five percent was all students. Sixty-seven percent was our, um, students who went through our preschool and that was a little bit higher. And then our goal for this coming year, or for this current year, is that by the end of the school year, so by May, eighty percent of students will demonstrate readiness and we're going to use our core advantage assessment and that is aligned with our preschool curriculum. So, um, the goal is a little bit similar, but we are changing the way we measure it just because that is an assessment that the teachers already give and they, um, gather data on that throughout the school year and that will give us some really good information on their math literacy and social, emotional science, social studies, those pieces. So we'll use that, um, assess, a little bit of a different assessment going, for this school year going into, um, next year. Our next goal was that all, um, on closing the achievement gap and that goal was set that we would, uh, close the gap between our free and reduced lunch and the students who did not qualify by at least one percent. And the gap for reading, and this was in all third through eighth grade, so we pulled MCA data from third grade through eighth grade. And in reading, we did reduce the gap by three and a half percent and in math, we reduced it by eleven percent. And Paul and I did a lot of looking at, um, the different grade levels and just making sure that, you know, it's important to make sure we're reducing the achievement gap for free and reduced and we'll continue to make sure that we're, um, looking at the data to make sure that all of our student groups grow too.
Is that more difficult with the pre-lunch now that people, you know, that, we've talked about the fact that now that there's free lunch, people don't fill out the paperwork, all it, i- is that more difficult now or is it, does it still translate?
Well, I would say you're gonna have probably less reported under the free and reduced lunch category because they're, if they don't fill out the form and they're not identified, but they would go into the non-free and reduced. So we'd still have their data, it would just be under the different category for reporting.
And some of those will still qualify under the direct certification, so the state's kinda taking that over under SNAP benefits and so we'll still have that piece there, but, yeah, people filling out the form is kind of a thing of the past.
Um, I'll go to the next one unless there's any other questions about, no, that's okay.
Well, this shows our goals.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay. Um, so this was our goal for this school year. We're still going to look at the free and reduced price, um, lunch population, but just changing the goal a little bit instead of, um, having the gap decrease, just looking at increasing their reading proficiency. So the students who are proficient in the twenty-five school year, thirty, or in the end of net, last year, which was the twenty twenty-five MCA data, we had thirty-eight and a half percent. And we want to increase that to fifty percent of our students. And then the math proficiency, increase it from thirty-nine to fifty percent as well. And that will also be in third through eighth grade. The next goal is around that students are college and career ready. So we look at three different criteria and in order to meet this goal, students need to have at least one of the three. So they don't need to meet all three, but they have to have at least one of the three criteria. Enroll in a course, have a completion of two or more college courses, or score at or above the ACT college readiness benchmark. And so our goal, I'm gonna scoot down to the next one, was that a hundred percent, all of our students would have at least one of those criteria and we had ninety-eight percent, so we were so close. So, um, for, for fifty-four out of our fifty-five students. And so next year, we're going to keep actually that same goal in hopes that we can have a hundred percent of our students, all of our students be college and career ready. So that's what that next slide is, just saying it's the same. Our goal was that we would have ninety-five percent of our, um, students in the class of twenty twenty-five have a graduation rate of at least ninety-five percent. And we had ninety-seven percent, so we met that goal. And our goal next year will stay similar, that we'll have at least ninety-five percent of our students graduate in the class of twenty twenty-six. And then this last goal, this was the new one that was added under the CACR, is that the stu, um, that we are preparing students to be lifelong learners. And so our goal that we had set for last year was having at least eighty percent of our seniors participating in a variety of learning experiences. So Mr. Wood, um, along with a few other of the secondary teachers, looked at students who may went to DC, FFA, they're involved in work-based learning, extracurriculars such as sports or musicals, choir bands. We looked at all the different, um, activities that are offered to provide a, a variety of learning experiences. And ninety-two percent of the graduating class of twenty twenty-five had participated in additional, um, learning experience. So that's a great, met that goal by quite a bit. And the goal for our current school year is that we'll have at least eighty-five percent. And we're going to actually have our graduating class do an exit survey. So we're going to, um, instead of having the teachers and Mr. Wood looking through that data, we're going to survey the students and get some information from them as they, um, graduate to see what they participated in and get their perspective on their learning experiences. And then we looked at what are some areas that we need to, um, that we're continuing to look at and, and grow in here at WCA and just continuing to, um, always look at our, our achievement, our academic achievement for students. So with some ways that we are working, um, through, through that this year for improving it is looking at our data teams and our student assistant teams. So revamping those to make sure that we're looking at the whole child. How do we, um, look at reading, math, and behavior? We have our new EL, um, English Language Arts curriculum for K- twelve. We're in year two of implementation for K- five and then the first year for six twelve. Our teachers are undergoing letters training and our paraprofessionals will have all completed letters training by the end of this year. And then the next group will start letters training in the upcoming year. And then, um, I, myself and Claire is on that committee and Paul is there too. We are, um, working through a curriculum advisory committee that has a couple parents on it as well and just looking, um, to get feedback from the public and, um, different groups to make sure that we are going through and, and getting an input in the curriculum advisory, um, the curriculum review process. We're also continuing to look at our student attendance, making sure that all students feel connected because if they feel connected, they're gonna come to school. That's our graduation rate, that's the broad learning experiences. And so how do our course offerings, um, really keep students engaged and keep them involved? And then our school culture, as you know, that we're, um, doing the Justin's Renaissance framework this year. We'll continue to survey student staff in the community. And then our PLCs this year at the secondary school have, um, some new focuses with student connections, attendance, cell phones, the reach program that we have. So those are all different pieces that we have been working to implement to, to grow our, grow here at WCA. Any questions or comments?
So I'm curious, are there, I'm willing to, or, well, let's take, uh, all students are ready for, for a career or college, for example. The, the goals that we have are deep in the head of, how were they developed? Are they?
Yeah, that's.
Something that we come up with or the guidelines or?
That's a good question. So, um, from MDE, there are certain pieces that they, that they give for ideas. Um, so like I pulled, I pulled this off of their website. They said you can use the college entrance exams, you can use post-secondary outcomes, graduation rates, local assessments. So they do give some guidelines. Um, but some of it is also, you know, they just said like, um, kindergarten ready, school readiness. So it's a little bit open to, do you wanna use your own district-created rubric? Do you wanna use an assessment that you already have? So MDE, um, did provide, does provide some guidelines. They have five bullet points on their website that we can use and then from there we can, um, look to see how it would fit in with our, with our district.
I, that meeting was excellent. Ran a great meeting, the curriculum advisory meeting. We talked a little bit about really the need for the community and board members to, to understand what happens in data teams and when the PLCs are working and how do we showcase that a little bit? Because it is very productive and it's working for students and that's why you're seeing increase in scores. So I don't know how we do that, if we have people present or if we put together a video, but I really think we need to find a way so people can see what that looks like. What does that mean and how does it help us? Because it's pretty, pretty impressive. You guys are doing great work. So I would really like to see us find a way to do that. I know people are busy, but how do we?
I like the videotape idea, where you do it during their workday, but present it to the board maybe at certain meetings, we say here showcasing our reading curriculum, here showcasing our math curriculum and things like.
Well, and how do they talk about student data? I mean, we have to be careful about confidentiality. But how do you say, oh gee, we've got these kids that are struggling with cause and effect? And so, you know, just how you work that through, even if you use fictitious names or something. But I think it would be really good for people to see how, how detailed that is for each child. I mean, it's pretty drilled out. So, but that was a really good meeting and there was good community input at that meeting. Really good.
Yes, it, yeah, it really was.
Any other questions or comments?
Hopefully the biggest thing you saw on there as well is just that, uh, survey. So I think we're gonna do a better job of getting seniors' emails once they leave so we can check probably right away once they leave, how, how did things go? Did you go into the workforce? Are you going to college? And then after there, did you feel like you were prepared for college bio? Were you prepared for college English and things like that? Or do we have to tweak then some of the things we do here? Did they have exposure to activities that we'd find valuable? So I think it's doing that. Also surveying our parents. Hopefully we can get, you know, some more input there on curriculum. We have some parents that are there that are great, but even getting more parents to give that, provide that feedback and really even on our, the CACR report to get more community input there to say, hey, what things are we doing well? What things would you like to maybe see done differently? What things can we improve upon? And I think that gets some buy-in as well. So I think that survey is gonna be an important piece of students, staff, community, and then just trying to get that engagement within our buildings as well.
It'll be next year's assignment. You all have to come back and tell us what you're doing.
You guys picked the right meeting to come to.
Write all those names down quick. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Hey, thank you.
All right, then we'll move into administrative reports, and we'll bring us right back to you.
Continue going. So we finished conferences with, even with the snow day and the change in schedule, we had ninety-six percent of our families attend between the two elementary schools, so a very high, a very high rate of attendance. We just really appreciate the opportunity that we have when parents come in, so we can set goals for the school year and just take time to discuss progress and make that partnership. So thanks to all the families, and we also have held book fairs, and Penny Peterson and Carla Nadwick took the lead on those. So we appreciated the, the time and effort they put into getting those, because that brings, brings funds back into our library then. Kari and I have been meeting with, his name is Craig, from Lakes Country Service Co-op, and we've been doing these math pathway meetings. They are, we attend virtual meetings on instructional practices series that's hosted by Compass, so it's a state. On some of those meetings, I'm with people from all over the state. And then Craig comes to our building once a month, and him, Kari, and I are talking through the math. Eight instructional practices in addition to looking at the new standards for twenty-twenty-two, because those will go into full implementation in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So at the end of the school year, we are going to do some work with our staff in May. And I think that'll be a welcome change, because we've been so focused on literacy the last few years. So we'll be starting to go into the new math standards to prepare for that implementation. Back to literacy, we have our, another letters training in December. So we're getting close to wrapping those up for our K-four teachers in addition to special ed and reading intervention. And as Claire had said, we had a district, district curriculum advisory council meeting on the twentieth of November. Nicole Bolinsky came and talked about our six-twelve social studies review process, where we're at right now. So I appreciated her coming and speaking on behalf of the team. And then I just provided some updates on where we're at with the READ Act, and on M D E standards, and then implementation timelines such as the math one. And then where we're at with our district's curriculum review cycle, in addition to some of the instructional frameworks that we've changed at the elementary school due to the E L A standards changing. REN team update, we're excited to have our first High Five Friday at North. So students on Nate's REN team at the high school are going to come and do that at North on this Friday, and then the following Friday, they'll be at South. So we are excited to have some high schoolers in our buildings. And I've been doing random knocks at both schools, so teachers can nominate a class or a student for, it could be maybe an improved, improved test score, or they were recognized for something really positive. So I've been doing those, and it's so fun, I was in a first grade classroom today, and they were jumping up and down and cheering for themselves, which is great, because they had done really well in their subtraction math test. We had our students of the month for responsibility recognized in November, and then we're focusing on responsibility again. And we'll have all school assemblies at the end of December that the fourth graders will be leading. Our Christmas concert at North is tomorrow, and South is December eleventh. And Mrs. Johnson and Ms. Borden are, the concerts are going to be amazing, so I'm really excited about those. And then I just couldn't be more proud of our staff for how hard they're working. There is a lot of, a lot this year with the letters training, all the E L A work, we updated our report cards, and just their willingness to adapt, implement the new teaching practices and change as we, as we learn and grow, it's been really incredible. And then one thing I didn't have on my report, but Kara Levin came to South on Monday and did a news segment on Mark and all of the decorating he does at South. And so they came on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and did a little piece on him. And then they came back on Monday and interviewed some students, and Mark and myself, and got footage of kids coming off the bus and seeing the lights for the first time. So I believe it's going to be aired on December twenty-second at the ten o'clock news. And once I have that confirmed, then I'll share that out with, with everyone. But it's a pretty special thing that they came and did a segment on him, so he deserves it, the, the school looks amazing, so. Any questions, comments?
Awesome. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to Mr. Wood.
Alrighty, my board report, just starting with our musical, once again was a great success. If, I hope that everyone had a chance to go and see the musical. It was really a whole lot of fun, I thought our students and staff did a fantastic job with the musical, and it turned out excellent. Some other things going on, November nineteenth, we had a presentation from the Zero Abuse Project focusing on the positive traits of Jacob Wetterling. Trying to shift the focus from the tragedy of Jacob Wetterling into instead celebrating how he lived and kind of how we build the community based on those positive traits. Very well received by our students, a very, we had all five twelve students at the presentation. Very well behaved, very good questions in regards to the presentation. Parent-teacher conferences, we also had ours November twenty-fifth, and then the rescheduled one on December first. Continue to provide valuable opportunities for meaningful conversations. We, especially at the secondary level, continue to try and find ways to make conferences a meaningful experience for parents. They were quite well attended for the fall conferences, and we're looking at some things for the spring conferences to try and continue to build that attendance up here at the high school. Other things going on, we had our first recognition rally, celebrating first quarter with our students on November twenty-fifth. We celebrated students of the month, recognized students with perfect attendance. Another cool part of that, that I don't have in my report, but was that teachers could give random shout-outs, submit random shout-outs to, about students, and then Mr. Gruco read all those out loud to everyone at the rally, it was pretty cool. Our student Renaissance team has been doing a ton of work in our building, and they helped lead this rally. And they did a fantastic job and are really stepping up in a lot of different ways, as Caitlin mentioned, with some of the High Five Friday, and just being willing to help out and really go above and beyond to help out with things. And lastly, just, you know, feel very blessed with the energy and dedication that we have in our student, staff, and community here at West Central. And it's really a good thing going on, so, any questions for me?
I guess I'll make, I'll make a comment, you know, going back to when we, this Renaissance thing started and going with Diego. I was maybe minimally skeptical, but I gotta say, you guys are really, you're doing what you said you were gonna do, and that's nice to see. I appreciate that, and I think everybody else does as well.
And it's, it's, it is really a great framework, thank you. And, and you know, I think the hard part is, there's so many cool, awesome things you want to do. And to the focus on trying to keep it small and sustainable and build as we go has been a main focus for us too, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Wood. That brings us to Mr. Foslien.
My report is short this week, so, or this month, so I was long the last couple months. We had our corporate partner recognition night last night, it's early in the season to do that, but it felt like a good time to get that taken care of last night. Have a State High School League Board meeting tomorrow morning in the cities. We have a band concert here on December eighth at seven PM. We have the First Annual Girls' Grant County Wrestling Tournament on Friday, December twelfth. I think we are at seventeen teams, I think, right now. They may not be big, we, we don't know that wrestling count yet, but we'll know that here kind of in the middle of next week, so. Kind of cool, we'll see how that all comes together, so. We have our, and you're gonna laugh at this, our second fortieth annual Grant County Wrestling Invite on Saturday. There's some discrepancy in when the fortieth is, so we kept it, we kept it the same this year, so.
We're gonna have it covered yet, you do it a couple more years, we'll make sure we get the forty.
So we're just gonna call it the second fortieth annual, next year will be the forty-first, so. We have a choir concert coming up here on Monday, December fifteenth at seven PM. The five-six concert is that same week on Thursday at two PM. Our senior high knowledge bowl team has the concordia also on Thursday, December eighteenth. And our boys and girls basketball teams are in the Pelican Rapids Holiday Tournament, December twenty-ninth and thirtieth. What's not on my report is I want to thank you guys for your support for online tickets through the first two games. I'll be honest with you, it has been very smooth. So thank you for allowing us to do that and being behind that opportunity. And I think that people would tell you who have worked the gate, it's gone very easy, so, thank you. Hopefully it continues that way, we're only two in, what, thirty games this winter, but it's been good, so. I don't know if you've heard anything, but it's been, been good on our end, so.
Just my ticket didn't work.
It worked the second night.
Yeah, it did.
Any questions, comments? All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Foslien. That brings us to community ed, Mr. Ryan.
A lot has changed since I wrote this in the last week, but November's theme was good, we had twenty-five students sign up at North, and then nine more signed up at South. Go volleyball, I actually started tonight, so I have to run over there after this to make sure everything's going okay. We ended up with eleven teams signing up, so that's pretty good. Thursday night skiing, we had low numbers to begin with, but we ended up with fifty-six, so we are gonna provide transportation to Andys. That starts tomorrow. Play and learn at North happened yesterday, and South will begin in January. The fifty-five-plus class is still in works, the people I was working with typed in my email room, so they were sending the information to nobody, pretty much. So I will get that set up here shortly. The youth basketball and youth wrestling are both underway and going well. And dance and rhythm class by Brian Gruco in the wrestling room was a success with eleven kids signing up.
All right, any questions, comments for Mr. Ryan?
Well, I think one of the things too that Ms. Nadwick is talking about down at South is some E C F E classes that I don't think we've had for a little while. So I think seeing those parenting classes with their young learners will be an excellent opportunity. So we're grateful that she's looking to get that beyond the play and learn. I think there's ten sessions maybe during the winter time.
I think it's ten, and she's gonna offer it for the whole district, not just South, so it should be good.
Awesome. All right, that brings us to technology. Mr. McNamara, what can you tell us about technology today?
That's a tough one. Within the district, one of the hot-button topics that we are dealing with and kind of have for perpetually forever is student damage to Chromebooks, more so the intentional damage or lack of care for the device. I am working on a plan to bring to the admin team to see if we can find some ways to curb some of that behavior. I'm gonna work with Stacy to try and make sure that it's as fair and equitable as possible. One of the things that's always a challenge is when a device comes to us, we become the judge and jury of whether it was intentional or unintentional, because ninety-nine percent of the kids are gonna say, I didn't do anything, I just found it this way. However, it's all about trying to turn out good human beings. So making sure that we teach some accountability that comes along with that. Still in rough draft form, but I'm hoping in a week or so to have something, a little bit more with teeth that we can put into play possibly as we come back from winter break. As always, I have to say a gigantic thank you to Stacy, she is phenomenal. Even when she is not in the building or during work hours, she's still getting things done and very responsive to everything that our district needs. So she is a major reason why we continue to have success in the district, and huge thank you to her.
All right, questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. McNamara. That'll bring us to buildings and grounds, Mr. Norenberg.
Here we are. You guys got the report there, you got to read through it, the water to water went in, they went really smooth. The only glitch was our holiday and the weather. The factory startup was supposed to be done on Monday, but the fellow was not able to make it, so they're trying to reschedule that. They are up and running, they've kind of done some jerry-rigging to get them to work and function until they can get that guy here. So we're just waiting for that final piece with him, and when they can get that scheduled. Yeah, the other thing was, I was, I was gonna mention is the, the stuff with Mark, Caitlin took care of that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're all right.
So you're fine.
No, 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 that's fine. And we've got the stuff set up for Mrs. Johnson for the stages and things like that. And it's, the new ones are on their way. I'm on the thirty email now, it keeps getting pushed back, so. They, they're gonna be using the old stages for this year. I mean, it's all good, it all works out, it'll, it'll be fine. And other than that, just yeah, the staff is doing a good job of keeping things going, trying to keep things clean around here and keep it looking shipshape. I think it's doing a pretty good job. These first couple snows are a little tough, because your ground is so warm to get that, how much do you clean off and polish the ice? And how much salt do you throw down? So we keep working on that, but everything's working fine so far, and I think we'll, we'll be in for a good winter.
I'm gonna hold you to it. All right, any questions, comments for Mr. Norenberg? That'll bring us to the superintendent report, thank you, Chad.
So kind of looking at our student enrollment there, you're gonna see that we've remained consistent. We did add one student that transitioned back to WCA here, so we're up from one hundred and thirty students to one thirty-one at South. Little Knights all the way through fourth grade, and then North Elementary stayed consistent at one ninety. And we had one student less now at the secondary school, so just one change there balances out, so we stay at the seven hundred and seventy-one students that are here at WCA in the month of December. And then the other parts of the report there with parent-teacher conferences, we ended up having to, of course, reschedule those due to the weather. We were hoping it was gonna hold, but I'm sure glad we dismissed when we did, because the snowflakes were large. And then all of a sudden, it got to be pretty sticky and kind of a challenging situation for folks to get home. So we did reschedule those for the, the first of December, and I think that worked out very well. Justin's Renaissance, the principals have already talked about that, but I think it also just shows, I'm not a Facebook person, but once in a while, I do get on to my wife's Facebook and notice that we had a couple bus drivers. Also feel appreciative by what our team did to get out and thank our drivers, and so that'll be a continued piece that our group will do. And it just shows what recognition, what it does, right? When people are recognized for their hard work, their good work, I think they appreciate that, and we just wanna keep that piece going. I know today at the elementary leadership team meeting, there were some, some different things there that were talked about, I don't wanna ruin anything that way. But I think just finding still ways to recognize, celebrate, have kids jumping up and down and things like that, that's what it's all about. Also as well, today in the mail, got two postcards, and I'll share from one, I'm not gonna share the other one, because I haven't been able to talk to that staff member, they weren't here yet today. But during the state fair, you were able to write a thank you note to an educator. And so we had one of our educators got a note from one of our students here that said, thank you for making the unseen seen in our school, you make a difference. And so, pretty remarkable for Mr. Austin Hanson. So thought that was pretty cool that he got that from one of our students, and just shows, I don't think sometimes our staff realize the impact that they have on, on our students and community and stuff like that. I saw, I think a year ago, Mr. Foslien had somebody come up, I think it was a section girls' basketball game, and that young lady came up and was teary-eyed when she was telling him how much impact he had on her time here at WCA. I know Mr. Wood's seen those, everybody's seen those, you know. So I think again, just shows that recognition, and sometimes we just get into the, the deep, long days of the day, but yeah. So went into Mr. Hanson's room today to celebrate that with him, he thought that was pretty cool, and got a nice little postcard from M D E. And like I said, we have one other staff member, but wasn't able to share that, and I don't want them to watch it on this broadcast here. I wanna make sure we can celebrate with them tomorrow. So great things going on, I think we have big plans still for December here, and we'll continue to roll forward and, and have a great team. I think the biggest thing with that team is sometimes I feel like we don't always necessarily make headway, because there's about five thousand different ideas. And so we're trying to keep that streamlined to make sure that we can, make sure all those ideas are good, and we can follow up on them. So there's great ideas, and we've got a great team working on that, so we'll continue to see positive pieces there. The leadership conference, remember, I do need to get you registered if you want to do that or need a hotel room. We do have Mr. Swatzky going down to present on the work that's happened with the greenhouse and the meat processing trailer that we have. I think sometimes we take that stuff for granted, because we just know that it's here. But we did have with Seth, Steve Rizidlow, he was the superintendent over in Brainerd years ago. And so he's the one consultant that normally sits in this chair here during those meetings. He said, hey, can I see what you guys, because I was just kind of explaining what we had going on, and he said, well, do you mind if we just take a look and go check it out? So Mr. Swatzky. So Mr. Swatsky took him on a tour and he goes, "I don't know if people realize." How did he call it? Real-time learning in real-time experience. And he said, "To produce meat," he said, "you can't just let the meat sit there for three weeks." He said, "Like, that's gotta get out ready to go." And so he was very impressed that our school had it. He said, "I know CLC has it," but he said, "to see what you guys have here," he said, "is awfully impressive." So it was kind of neat to see those pieces there. So like I said, Mr. Swatsky will be presenting two forty-five on Thursday, so it'd be great to have some representation there. And I know he's also going down to Nashville, I think he said in a week or two, to get recognized for that regional award that he's won. So we have a lot of great things going on at WCA with a lot of great people. And then we did have our first kickoff meeting yesterday with Kraus Anderson and Whit Seth. And so they're starting to get together a schedule and a plan. And so they are sitting together to coordinate those schedules, to kind of lay things out. I had talked to them about getting our staff out on tours and Lindsay said, "Oh, slow down." She said, "We wanna come back with those staff now that there's some, a concept for a project to say, 'Hey, here's what we've kind of put together. How does this feel for your spaces?'" Remember, I think Darren, you had asked that. So they said, "Oh, no, we need to come back together to say, 'How do you feel about what this plan looks like?'" So they would like to have meetings scheduled with our staff in our three buildings to say, "Here's what we've..." 'Cause they said, "They've not seen that yet." They said, "This is gonna be new to them, so we'll share that with them. They'll be able to give some feedback there and from that point, then they'll determine the best sites to go visit." 'Cause they said, "It doesn't make sense to take them to a site that's not going to be similar to what we're looking at." So they said, "Let's put that together and then we'll get them out there." They said, "Our timeline seems to be enough time, but I know that the, the marketing person said, 'Hey, there's gonna be, we got some push here a little bit, so we gotta get things rolling.'" And so they're ready to get that started and, and move that forward. And so I'll keep you posted on that. KA, the reason why their contract is off tonight, they're still tweaking some things, so it was nothing. They just said, they didn't know that I was gonna be pushing it for tonight's agenda. They said, "Well, we, we could have something," but I said, "I don't wanna rush you." And they said, "There's no rush on our end." So they said, "Please don't feel like it needs to be there that we're concerned." They said, "We're moving." They had their group here yesterday, so we'll move there. I did sign the agreement with Whit Seth and I guess the biggest piece to let you know there, as I read the contract a couple of times, I said, "The way I read your contract, there, there is no charge now from Whit Seth until there would be a successful referendum." So I said, "Yep." Brent said, "Nope, that's how this works." So I said, "Yeah, we'll continue to have these meetings and do that." And he said, "There won't be a charge until the, you know, the referendum would be successful." The reason why they wanted that agreement, again, just to clarify, was they didn't wanna put all the work into the pre-referendum and then have us say, "Oh, you know, we're gonna actually go with some other architect." 'Cause they said, "Then we have no, then we put in a lot of time and effort and didn't receive any compensation." So that's where that sits with them. And then you'll just see kind of the dates here. Of course, the committee meeting tonight, Truth and Taxation. I will be out of the district next week, Monday through Friday. And so I've got Mr. Wood and Mr. Foslien in charge of weather decisions and things like that, so they'll be in charge of that. And any other pieces, Maggie will be able to help and payroll's already been taken care of there as well. We've got that process for the December fifteenth paycheck, so we're good to go there as well.
Questions, comments from Mr. Brownlow? All right, then we'll keep plugging away here. We've got new business, the first reading of the following policies with statutory and recommended revisions from MSBA. Policy seven-eleven, video recording on school buses. Policy seven-twelve, video recording other than on buses. Policy seven-twenty, vending machines. Policy nine-oh-one, community education. Policy nine-oh-seven, rewards. And policy five-thirty-four, school meals policy. Are there any big highlights on any of those, Mr. Brownlow?
The biggest thing was on the video recording other than on buses would be that they removed the word surveillance and changed it with the word recording or record. And then one that I was kind of surprised to see that was still in the policy is just recording. It said, "In extreme circumstances, recording could happen in bathrooms or locker rooms." And they've removed that and just said that it would be monitored by staff. It would be a same-sex gender, same-gender person in that bathroom. If we had issues in the locker room and things like that, it would be that, so that's the change there. And then just the school meals policy, updating it to include, you know, if students wanna come up to take a second meal, which they can, there's a cost to that, but to make sure that they have to take a reimbursable meal the first time. They can't come up and just say, "I wanna take these things." It's gotta be the reimbursable meal the first time and then the second time they can come. But then it is a non-programme meal charge, so they cannot get that second meal at our student rate. And so really, probably down the road, we'll take out that student rate because then they have to pay the five-oh-five, the five dollars and five cents rather than the student rate that we have because they've already received the USDA compensation for that meal. So that's the biggest change there. And then just that we use GAMC for our payment system for meals as well as any of our messaging that goes out, we're able to use that system. That's all I have for those.
So you can be a student for one meal, but not for two meals?
Yeah, that gets to be a little more expensive. That's right, yeah.
Okay. Just the first reading on those, so no action there. And then we move into personnel items. We have the administrative contracts for almost all of our administrators, correct?
Yep, everybody except for Mr. Ryan since he was already hired new, yeah.
We got him one last year, right?
Yep.
All right, so we have the elementary principal curriculum coordinator contract. We have the secondary school principal contract, the dean of students and activities directors contract, Buildings and Grounds Director contract and Technology Director and Director of Assessment Coordination. All of those policies we are removing, or we added also then, we're gonna do all these together, right?
No, I would do it separate. I do the administrative since we added the, yeah.
Take it first, the administrative contracts. Any questions or comments on any of those contracts?
And Claire and Darren were the two board members. Is there any? Try to keep them consistent, I think was the biggest piece, right? Some of those things that we looked at sick leave to get those consistent amongst all the contracts as well as kind of the vacation days and increase there up to four days, six days. That could be the cap and some payout there for them. And then just pretty standard on our increases for all of our administrators. Anything else that you even wanna highlight?
Then I would look for a motion to approve the administrative contracts. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have the following resignations. We have Quinn Olson, a paraprofessional, and also Eunice Alexander, payroll manager.
Those are both effective at the end of the calendar year here, so are at the end of, Eunice would be December thirty-first and Quinn will be at the end of the last day with students.
All right, any questions, comments there? We'll look for a motion to approve those resignations. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Then we have to approve the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Annual Summary Report.
So Caitlin gave you the presentation and now this is just what we need to submit through our Title I grant. That's where they track this and so you'll see where it talks about our goals, if we met the goals, if some of those goals are multi-year goals and the goals that we've set for this current school year. And so it's the summary report that we'll post on our website as well as submit to MDE.
Any questions or comments on that report? There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we'll move down to adopt the resolution establishing combined polling places, similar, this is done yearly. This would be effective in any case that we would have a non-standard election.
Similar to what we had in November.
Similar to what we had this year. No one else was on a ballot. If we were to do it on one of the February, May, August dates, this resolution would essentially set our polling places in Elbow Lake and Kensington, similar to what we had last year. So if we don't do that, essentially we can't hold an election outside 'cause we don't have a polling place.
Yeah, we have to set this by December thirty-first. And so I guess the biggest part of discussion would be, you know, we amended our resolution to go from four to seven for that special election. I know there was a little bit of discussion of, we're not gonna do that in the future, so right now it's set at eight AM to eight PM. Again, we're planning our referendum to be on the November general election, so it just does not impact that at all. But this would be if we had anything else, it probably won't come into play, but if a board member resigns or we have something else that we have to do, we just need to be prepared. So I guess that was the only conversation pieces. Right now it's in there at eight. That's been the standard piece, was the eight AM to eight PM. You can't go any earlier than eight PM. It's gotta close. That is set in statute. But your minimum hours, I believe, can be three hours, so we could've did five to eight on a special election, but you cannot close before eight. But you can decide your starting time of where would you like that to be.
And we could amend that again later if we chose to.
Correct, yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So I guess I would say we just leave it at eight to eight for right now. We don't know what situation would arise that we would need to use this. Doesn't look like we will, but to be safe, we'll have it there. And if we want to amend that later on, we can, we have that option. Does that make sense?
I think we should do a roll call vote when we get a resolution.
Any other comments, questions on that? Then I would look for a motion to approve that. And we'll do a roll call. Gross?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Sandsted?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
And Vincent?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. All right. Then that brings us to set organizational and January twenty-sixth committee meeting, date and time. Looking at the calendar.
Yeah, I mean, we've typically kept it that first Wednesday, but we do have to set that since it's the start of the new
Right.
calendar year.
And that is like the eighth, seventh?
Seventh will be Wednesday.
And is that, that one has to be in the evening. The organizational one has to be late. Is that correct?
No, it doesn't, but that's, no. It's really the Truth and Taxation, it had to be at six o'clock, that's what we, that today. Nope, the organizational meeting can be, but our standard time has been at five-thirty.
Right, so standard time would be five-thirty on Wednesday the seventh. Is there any issue with that? I will say I may not be here on that. I think I'll be gone for a training, but I could be remote.
Okay.
But I just wouldn't probably be able to be present. If you're on vacation, then don't bring your computer with you.
Sounds like you got a lot of committees.
But you may get some committees that you weren't planning for, so I'm just saying.
That's right, yeah.
So that seventh at five-thirty would be acceptable for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll set the organizational and that committee meeting for January seventh at five-thirty. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Then I would look for a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion carries. Did we actually take a motion on the setting the org-